We are on the record.
Good morning and welcome to our agenda for March 24th, or guest, our meeting, not our agenda. March 24th, we would start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? And so?
Yep. I'll make motion that we accept the agenda for March 24th, 2025.
Okay, all, or Ben, we've been second in all favor?
Aye.
Alright, Ms. Rita, you are up next. You got my email with questions?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the questions specifically are.
I will look it up really quickly. I say it on my desktop, which is a tragedy. Usually I'm questioning where they are going, so flying us title.
Mm-hmm.
There were thirty-six parcels we did deed searches on.
Ax deed.
Ax deed.
Yep.
That makes sense. And then, that was a question for... There was a refund on a CP, I want to ask send about that one. Well, it was holdings, I can figure out, that one... That one was, is that general fund?
No, that's Sheriff EOC. So, that's the capital, Sheriff's Capital.
That was my question, what is that capital? Is that the Cascade Funds?
Um, you know what, I'm not exactly sure, because I'm not on that side of it. But if it's, the ADCOM is EOC. They've been evaluating the needs, the 911 needs. So that's ongoing, and I believe that that is reimbursed through grant funds. That one's coming out of Sheriff's Capital Equipment Fund.
Okay, and that's what I was questioning, I think, because it shows me the general fund on both.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's just within the general fund is that capital.
Correct.
I had one other one. Engineering, stakeholder needs an assessment.
That's the, that's the Sheriff's Capital. The other one is a grant, okay, so there's two of them from the Sheriff's Department. One is their grant line, specifically that, i.e. the child's breathalyzer and the battery pack. That is also grant funds.
Okay.
One is, one is going through capital equipment, the other one is actually going through the grant.
Okay. So this one's capital equipment. What stakeholder needs an assessment?
And that's where they're assessing the 911 needs over there. I think that is, I believe that's the last bill.
Okay. And then the other one was the Interlocking Device Fund. Where do we get those funds, you know?
I am not sure where those funds come from, I just know that if, if they are ordered to have the breathalyzer before they can start their vehicles, we have to pay for it. It is a specific fund for that.
I noticed that there were some other breathalyzers, I think, and that's why I was questioning it, because I, it felt like it was coming out in two different places.
Yeah.
And the Sheriff's here, he can answer my questions. Alright, those were my questions. I'll ask Kevin a couple of things.
I don't, I looked over everything, it looks fine.
I didn't have anything, okay.
Make motion that we accept the claims, board orders, and no junior colleagues for March 24th.
Second. So we moved in second in all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before you came in, I was asking Rita some questions. So the stakeholder needs assessment, that's on the, we paid a $2892,893.
At the EOC, the last of the evaluation of the 911 needs.
Oh, okay.
I'm just questioning what that is, what are we, is that through LA PC, or who, how did, how is that?
Not sure exactly, I can get you the correct one. Give me a second, I can get you that information.
What was it called then?
Survey.
It's ADCOM.
ADCOM, okay.
I have, I can email you.
That is, but I...
So there's a Capital Sheriff's Capital Fund, is that the Cascade Funds that we still have? It is, okay.
Yeah, Doug is texting, apparently he's watching, he says it's for Cascade Funds, for the radio study court fees and interlock funds.
Tell him to go on vacation.
Doug, if you're listening, go on vacation! Turn off your phone.
Rita, will that check be available today for Will?
Okay, fantastic, I will be down at the end of the day, thank you.
Alrighty.
Doing about a hundred things right now.
Alright. Next up, we got word from Annette that she had something else come up, so she is not available.
Don't we have the Sheriff first?
We got Sheriff first.
Oh, sorry, I checked him off, nope, you don't get to talk, to discuss that.
Gabby get back to you yet?
She said she's, she's pulling it right now, yes.
You could probably ask the question and Doug would answer. But you'll have to go to the microphone.
And the Sheriff thing though, too. So we didn't get anything on the request to purchase the three vehicles, so we're kind of flying blind on this.
Yes.
But, what our question is for you is, I thought we bought three last fall. So is this preloaded for this next year's budget?
Preloaded, evidently there was a meeting that I was not involved in, superintendent was, as well as Dave, about police vehicles, they have a lot where they open them, and that's the only time they build them, that ends June 30th this year, I believe.
Ends then, yeah.
And then I also, just to update this, I had the lieutenant run numbers on cars, and with that opening we've had for a while, there's a car that just hasn't been getting, we're only going to need two, not three this year.
Okay, perfect. So we're purchasing two.
I just had him run the numbers on it.
You ordered three of them?
I haven't ordered nothing yet, that's why we're here.
Yeah, and I just wanted him to run the numbers on our cars and what we had, and what could go into backup, and what we could get rid of, and we still have some pickups we could send to, to the road department, too. So, so we're only going to need two, right now there's a $6,500 incentive through Dodge for the Durangos. So I, you know, I guess there was a meeting that said we, we tried to get them and then figure it out. I'm not sure how all that works, so I just wanted to come up to the commission and see what, what the next step is, or what you guys want to do. And I know we've always run into that problem where our budget starts October 1st, ends September 30th, of course, but they have their block of opening police car bids, and we've, we've gotten caught where we haven't been able to buy the cars that year, so we waited the next, then we're buying six instead of three, and I think that's what we were trying to avoid.
And I think where it's confusing to us is, first of all, I would really like an updated Excel spreadsheet, Dave ran one for me before, so...
I can email you one.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And then, secondly, if we can do it at the same time of year, and knowing which budget cycle it's for, we did one last fall, so now I don't know if that was for...
That was for this year's.
Okay.
Yes.
So, the three that we're approving right now, are we going to have to pay out of this year's budget?
It's for next year's, yeah.
Six in one budget year, or?
Or we wait and hope for the best after October 1st.
We can approve it, but I need to know what budget it's in.
For next year's. And that's the problem, is, is it's never for the same year, because our, our budget and the police car build date budgets, they don't coincide with each other at all. And that one year, of course, it, it may never happen again, but that one year, there were no police cars available by the time our budget opened. We didn't get any, we had to buy six the following year. And that was, that was a heartache.
I think we did eight, maybe even.
It may have been eight, it was, there were a bunch of cars.
What I want to get to, though, is that, so we're ordering them now, that bill may come due before October 1st.
It may.
I know that we already paid three out of this year's budget.
That's kind of why we're here, just for that, just in case thing.
So what did Gabby give you on the budget? I mean, what do you have available?
This is for, since we've had a doc 26 yet, so... Those three vehicles, we already paid for them, and I'm trying to figure out why they haven't been taken out yet.
They've been paid for.
It's showing we had $200,000 in there, but we paid for those a month ago, if not longer, so I'm, I'll have to do some looking in on that. Right now, the prices are running right around 40 to 45,000. That's, that's to buy the vehicle.
You're not on record, but, so right now pricing is 40 to 45,000, okay. So the only thing I'd like you to do is, we can pre-approve this, I want to know where your budget is, and whether we are pushing this out to the 26 budget, or whether it's going to be, need to be paid in the 25, to make sure that you have enough money remaining in this budget. We cannot hit PILT, that's what I'm concerned about.
Right.
PILT is right now about as low as we need to go with everything that we have outstanding.
That's the only reason we're here, it's not, I just, I just want to see what way the commissioners want to go, because, like I said, if we want to wait until October and hope for the best, I'm okay with that. But I do know that there was that meeting before, and the, and the direction was, get, get with the commission, let us know about what they're going to be, and decide, and then we'll figure it out after October 1st, because we did miss the vote one time, and, and it hurt the following year, so, because we had to come up with...
We need, we need a regular cycle, we need to be buying so much so we can preload the budget, so we know exactly what we need. What I don't want to do is hit a situation where we've already bought three last fall, we're going to do two more in the same budget year.
And the, the year before is when we bought six. So this is the, this is the catch-up year to where if we're going to start doing it, because they always stop June 30th, because that's their end of the cycle for building police cars. And so it, it's never going to coincide with our, with our October 1st. Will there be cars left over? I don't know, there may be.
Kevin, when they, you're just buying the car, and then you have to get it retrofitted in Utah to get...
That's correct.
Built in, so, and it's Utah that has deadline for building them, is that correct?
No, it's the Dodge, Dodge opens up all their tooling to make all these police cars at one time, so they do a block of them.
So they call them police cars?
Yeah, they're, they're pursuit packages, pursuit package cars.
Right. I see. I see.
Again, just follow up, let us know what we've already paid for out of this year's budget, which budget these two are going to come out of.
Yeah, we should have paid for three vehicles, because we, we had three, three Durangos delivered, month and a half, two months ago.
So this is a evolving deal every year?
It is.
Three vehicles each year, because of the mileage that we call them.
But like I said, we had that one position that just hasn't been being used, so we have one, there's, there's really no reason to buy three vehicles, we can get away with two, piece of cake.
And then from now on, you'll be coming and presenting this time of year, every year?
Unless, unless Dodge, or whoever is in charge of the, I don't know if it'll be Ford, Dodge, GM, whoever, it's always been Dodge, it's been the cheapest, unless they open, if they move their block of tooling into a different time of the year, then, then we're kind of at their mercy, because...
Well, when you come, though, just let us know what the budget looks like, that's what we're concerned about, is the budget.
I know that as this year, we spent the budget on Durangos that were just delivered two months ago, there's, there's no doubt about that. We, we ordered those Durangos and they're on the road right now.
So if we were to order, say, you know, middle of May, because the window's still open, and that bill may not come and need to be paid into October.
Right.
So what's the delivery schedule for those?
That's what, that's what's up in, up in the air, we don't know when, when they're going to get delivered and require payment. Is it going to be September 1st, August 15th, October 31st?
I understand that.
Thank you.
You just understand our position, too, we're approving something out of a budget that you may or may not have, so...
And that, that's my concern, that's why I'm here, I like it, we can, we can roll the dice and wait until October 1st and see what happens there, but I do know that that bit is one, that's why the meeting took place, I don't know who else was on that meeting, but I know, I know Dave was.
So how do we get ahead of the curve there? Their budget, to be able to do that because of this timing issue?
You know, the one year we had to buy eight, we thought we got caught up, so I'm still feeling like I don't have enough information to answer that question. So it's...
Well, they're attrition, they, these, these vehicles get miles all the time, so if you, if you take a year off of not miling them out, you're going to get in the hole.
Sure.
And, and so we caught up, and now it's just a matter of replacing them and having your, your spares that you need, and unfortunately, now it's about three spares that you need, just because of the amount of cars around the road, the deputies, the back country deputies, all the, you know, when you drop it off at Alpine, and sometimes things don't get done the same day, so you have to have the vehicle to send them out in.
So you're, these are all, these prices, and I mean, acquisitions are coming out of your budget, right? So that's, that's what I was saying, how do we make sure this budget's caught up enough to take care of it, so we're not having to pull it out of somewhere else?
And that might be a good conversation with the clerk's office this year when you're budgeting? You know, preload something to make sure that...
It may be a preload type thing, so there's always leftover for the following year. If, although I don't know, when you close budget, is there, is there a carryover?
There is.
There is.
So for the new one here, do cars not fall under the CIP program where everyone puts in what they would like for the year, and then?
We do do that, yes, anything over 25,000 has to go through it, that's where that three vehicles a year came up, was through CIP, that we could know kind of, you know, what we were going to be looking at every year.
But it just won't be included in this year's program?
It will be, and, you know, unfortunately, it's, we're always out of sync with this. But I will be discussing it, though, if that one goes open until June, then, you know, we will definitely be having CIP prior to that. I would imagine that Johann will be calling that right away, so put this into that CIP cycle, and I don't think you need to order them today.
No.
Okay.
No, we're just, we're trying to get direction, is what we're trying to do, because that window's coming, and, and I don't want to be waiting until the second week of June going, oh, guess what, we have two weeks left. That's, that's all we're trying to do, is, is stay ahead of the ball here a little bit, and, and get it on everybody's radar and say, do we, don't we? I know the $6,500 is pretty, pretty attractive right now, $6,500 vehicle incentive.
Probably, I would say it's at the end of this month. I'll have to go back and look at that email from the Chrysler rep, but I think it's April 30th.
April 30th.
April 30th, next month, so you guys...
Will you reach out to, we reach out to Johann and see when the CIP is going to meet?
Yeah, she's on vacation this week, but she's in Aruba.
And she's, when she gets back, you guys will reach out and see when CIP is going to meet? I mean, I think you, you know that we will buy the two vehicles that we need, it's just how we're going to do that, what the timing looks like.
That's where, that's one of those CIP, at a police car, we can't really do foot patrols to McCall, so, I mean, they're, they're kind of a necessity for us to do our job, so it's, it's, that's a tough one, but, and that's kind of where I think it's on us to go, do we need two, do we need three, what do we need? Instead of just going three, three, three.
Absolute.
To me, that doesn't make any sense, if you don't need it, you don't need it, why, why spend it?
We talked last year, too, about doing one out of the Cascade Funds, but now that they haven't re-upped, I don't know what that looks like, since those cars are not going to remain in Cascade, so...
Right. I, I believe I use, I know I use Cascade Fund, at least for, for building, I, I did supplement out of that, so...
We used it on one or two of these silver ones we just got to.
Yeah. So...
Alright, let us know more.
And just another thing for the commissioners on a totally off topic, but if you guys, the two commissioners that were sitting last year, remember our end of the year report that the Sheriff's Office did, we're putting our final touches on that. So when that gets done, I'll put that on the agenda, so I can kind of present it to you guys, and then I think what we'll do this year is, ask Jeremy to put on the website, and then put a link to it, so the citizens can get in and take a peek at that as well, so...
Great.
So be expecting that sooner than later, we're just putting the finishing touches on it now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Kevin, one question for you real quick, when you guys are going out for bid for dealerships, you just stay Dodge? Are you going to all the dealerships, or what do you, what do you guys do?
We, we try to stick local, and we had, we had Cascade Auto involved in this as well, and so hopefully we can stay local, that's a nice thing, is we have warranty work here, there's also state bid is...
Mountain Home Auto.
Mountain Home Auto, and so they're the, they're the state bid representative for us, so the, there's, there's positives and negatives, usually they're a little bit cheaper, but when you need warranty work, you have to travel for it a lot of times, so it just kind of depends on, on how that works.
Okay, now I just asked a question, I wasn't sure, I knew we have to have bids to be able to go over 75 grand, so...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
And a change in July, are you seeing all of them?
Well, I mean, it's, none of those vehicles are over 75, even though you're buying three, if you don't need them, they're all under 75,000.
I don't think so far.
Dr. Phillips, oh.
Just real quick, I just got a text that, to answer one question we had, got a email from the Dodge fleet rep, and Durangos will need to be ordered by May 15th.
Oh, good.
So we have some time, and that's going to push it closer to October for us, so we have a little bit of time, just let's everybody, okay?
Thank you. Morning.
Morning. Some updates on some stuff, something I was thinking about this last week, and talking with HR about, just to share the panel, the expertise that I have in my office, maybe just to show off a little bit. Besides Nikki, of course, is only new to our agency, just it's not quite a year, even though she has seven years in law enforcement. Jacla Faye's been with us for 15 years, Steve has been back with us for 15 years, Molly's been with us for 14, and I'm the second youngest at 10 years, so we just have a longevity in our office and expertise, and he's really proud of that.
That means you got to go another five years, is it?
Hey, oh, no, two years and one month. Things we're working on, Steve, who's, as you guys know, does the supervised diversion for adults and community service, he just completed the most updated community service resources in the Valley County area, and we've updated that on our website, because I've been working really hard to get stuff on the website, so we can just refer to that for those that are not in town, that they can always access any paperwork from our website. I finally got our ARCON training set up, ARCON is the self-defense tactics that the officers need to have for certification and remain certification for post, that's set up in May, my plan is to do four-hour trainings two times a year. Nikki would like to be certified in that to teach it, so my next goal with her is to send her to post instructor development training, which is going to be in the fall, so that she can do that, so that we have a qualified, a post-certified instructor for ARCON for misdemeanor probation and juvenile probation here in the middle of the state, because then we can use her throughout. Even though we do have law enforcement post-certified instructors for ARCON, it's just different. So she can work with both of them, and so we can always have one and two instructors, we don't have to pay for one, because I will be paying for someone to come up here to teach it. Just to inform, I, you guys always have my little list of all things I'm involved in, I did send in my resignation for the IJJA Board, that's the Idaho Juvenile Justice Association Board, that's a conference that's put on every single year for juvenile justice. Nikki is going to take my place, again, to help get her some practice on that, what an instructor looks like, get her just involved in that. Plus she gets a free conference every year, which we like that. So she's going to take that on, I'll be with her for a little while, while she learns the, how to do that. The other thing that Nikki has kind of been working on is there's a gap in life skills or independent, the living classes that are local, we have nothing, really, and so to have juveniles who are 15, 16, 17, 18, transitioning into 18, there's just nothing to assist in, to teach them what a budget is, teaching how to do your laundry, how to, some parents can do all that kind of stuff, no worries, others, some are just, just grow faster, the kids do, and so they want to have that understanding in cooking. I'll just won't forget that one juvenile who was 18 years old, didn't know what a teaspoon versus a tablespoon were, what that meant, you know? Or a quarter of a cup, you know, just didn't know what those things were. No fault to somebody else, when you, when you have that ready-made stuff, you just don't use those skills. So she's working on putting together, doing some research around the state to see what's going to be most effective for our area, that's her current pride and joy, is putting something like that together, so, so this is where we're at today.
On, on that, so when I was working with the food banks in the past, that was going to be something they were kind of focused on, is doing some of that type of training, those using the food bank? Is there a collaboration there that might be able to happen?
I have, yeah, I have not even, didn't know that. I did talk with the Change Cafe today, and some Josh is also, I mean, they're doing a lot of mentoring for working stuff, so that might, that might be something that we can collaborate on also, is how to maybe do a little independent living as well, as than working in the workplace, so he and I'll talk more about what that can look like, and I'll just send Nikki to go figure that out, but that is really a bigger gap for juveniles, is that transition from having mom and dad take care of them to living out on their own. And if we can collaborate, oh, what a great thing we would bring to this community. Thank you.
Betcha. Well, and that's what I heard from the food banks, is a lot of times people will come pick up their food baskets, and they have absolutely no idea what to do with it.
Yes.
And so, I mean, that's training not only the children, but the parents, too, to be more self-sustaining, so...
Yeah, because when you get your tomatoes, and you get your rice, or you get your beans, what, how do you integrate that and make something, make chili? Thank you.
Next up, Human Resources Director. Oh, no, I already checked off, sorry, our Director of Extension.
Good morning, we have Allison Stats with us this morning, and social report on 4H, and then I will report on other happenings in the office.
Perfect. I'm skipping everybody this morning, you know, my head in the game today, wow.
Oh, it's great, spring break somewhere.
Oh, my allergies are, I'm just dying with allergies right now.
Yeah, it's supposed to get really, well, good morning. Just some brief updates for the 4H program, and what Aleah and Amy are doing as well. We completed the Ranchers Feeding Youth Program last week, it was a huge success, I was really just delighted to see how well the ranchers themselves facilitated the classes, and the cattleman cooked 420 burgers for the school, McCall Elementary, yeah.
That's awesome.
And, but great collaboration with the cafeteria there, and everything just ran really smooth, so that was, that was great. We did fourth grades, and there's three fourth grades there, so that was a good show in the school, and looking forward to do it again.
Only three classes, or do they feed the whole?
Oh, no, they fed the, fed the whole school and the staff, yeah.
It's like, yeah, McCall's grown, no, not that much, oh my gosh. Oh, no, yes.
But, let's see, and then we had a successful steer weigh-in, it was really smooth for all that snow and yuck that happened on that Saturday, it was just really nice to get them in and out, and families help each other, and a great support from our leaders and people that helped us do that, so that's always successful, nothing...
And all the animals weighed in, and...
Yeah, the steers are all weighed in, nothing hit the highway, we're just winning, we're doing great, it is good. It's tough up here, it's not the same, like, my colleagues are like, what do you mean? Most kids have had them for three months, and we still have two feet of snow on most yards.
Oh, I have four. I'm dying too.
Yeah, well, haha. It's true, it's a pretty big year, isn't it? We had a good market sale meeting, just to reconvene and make sure that we have all the materials we're going to need, and enough help, and that was really great, we're on track, and good audit on everything, so that was really good. Just keeping that all shipshape, and we had a good Ag Day, it was National Ag Day on Tuesday last week, so did a little bit of promotion with FFA and 4H out front of Ridley's and Farm Bureau. They had set up this really neat activity inside the grocery store itself, to learn more about where your food comes from, and then you could win $250 gift certificate for Ridley's, so that was pretty great, they did a good job with that. They did a good job with that. Um, had fair board meeting. Yes, that's always a help, but.
I was busy.
It was busy productive. It really kind of broke off into committees kind of in that concept. And Scott was able to join us. So that was a huge help because I really need some pretty big help on the swine area this year. I will definitely need two temporary pens in the very minimum. Um, and making sure everything that we do have down there is running like and set up. So, um, taking a good look at that, he's going to go down there with me. Um, and we'll see what we can do to get that all fixed up. Uh, okay, let's see, Aliyah was sick a bit, so that kind of always changes up the scramble. Just the colds were going around and when you have children, that's what everyone gets. But, um, we made it all work and I was able to have my AmeriCorps come for some of those events. So that was a huge help. Um, she attended the conference in Boise recently on community and professional development. And she's grown as a person immensely and it's so amazing to watch that. Those are the twenty-year-olds that we're talking about and gaining those life skills. And that is excellent. Um, she helped design and create what we did for the Winter Carnival Parade. Um, and we'll use that again for the Valley County Fair. So it's going to be a paradise this year. Welcome to paradise. Two thousand forty-five.
Fourth of July parade, that'd be a good one too.
Uh huh. Well, we'll, we'll probably switch it up like a little more of the.
Fireworks.
Yeah, kind of theme of red, white and blue, right? But, um, yeah, they, they are, we're going to do a float there too this year, yeah. Had some good, um, parrot volunteers that have really stepped up to fold a trailer and do that and help us. So that's wonderful. Um, let's see, so she helped at Ranchers Feeding Youth and Ag Day. Um, she's developing more curriculum and implementing it for the STEM programs that she's delivering. And McCall for the Public Library for Cloverbuds in Donnelly and helping Aleah branch over for Cascade After School Programs. So kind of grab and go curriculum, which is nice. Uh, currently collaborating with Gallup Strengths Workshop for youths and parents. And that's just a, a piloting little program that they're going to try to collaborate how to, uh, talk to each other as an adult and parent. And where your, where each strength lies, it's, it's Gallup, um, by two point O. It's a Strength Finder, it's a positive way for youth or adults to focus on certain aspects that they're good at. That you do take kind of some questions and testing and it kind of helps, um, well, it does help. You relate to others and be able to say what, what your strengths are. And I think that age, it's really tough to identify what you're good at and kind of build you up from there. You're better off starting with something that you're really good at and kind of working on those areas. And sure, you always want to work on your weaknesses, but you'll, you'll do better if you can focus on your strengths. So that's the collective and that'll be a pilot program. I'll have more on it. She's going to do that with Sylvia Ryan.
I was going to say Sylvia is a, Sylvia's been qualified on all of that Strengths Finder.
Yeah, this is their creation. So they're going to do it, there's a book for it for ten to fourteen-year-olds. So we've got five of those and they're going to do it for the adult and then the parent and then have three workshops set up for it.
So did that for all my employees at the bank and it was very effective.
Yeah.
So does playing baseball, is that considered a strength?
Well, yeah. Why not?
Would have been for me, yeah.
Yeah, it kept you channeled, right? But that's, you know, maybe not all youth will do four H, but we just want them doing something healthy and, and good, right? Couple reminders for you, um, just that Bowls of Hope is coming, that's April first. So if you can make it, uh, that's down at the Cascade Cultural.
One here and one in McCall.
Yes.
I'm here when the one in McCall is going on and I'm in McCall when the one here's.
Well, if you can get away, yeah. It'll, at least it's just across the way here, not too far.
And what, what is it again?
It's for Rise Up to Thrive. It's the fundraiser that they do, yeah, Bowls of Hope and people make the ceramic bowls and.
That was good last year.
Four H is doing a savory vegetable and beef soup, so.
That's at noon?
And that's at noon, yep. Well, they kind of eleven to one.
Eleven to one.
There's flexibility when you can go in there. Um, the other event is the Geothermal Heating and Cooling District Open House. And I've been asked to do some environmental education programming. So I'm going to do a little program for the kids that come through, um, called Oreo Earth and it's about tectonic plates. Um, and that'll be at the American Legion.
You, you should get ahold of, you know, Scotty Davenport. How to get old Scotty, he's all into that. That geothermal stuff.
I bet he'll be there. I'm hoping that, well, I'll make sure.
He's a great resource.
I think he's on that committee.
I was going to say, I think those are, that are there. But that'll be three thirty to six P M, April tenth at the American Legion. That's interesting, so. Excited to learn more about the geothermal potential.
Economic Development Council's been very involved in the geothermal stuff. Is it that something we should blast on our Facebook page?
Those are the ones organizing it, Lindsay and Leslie.
Maybe you could work with Mackenzie to make sure it's, gets put on our Facebook page.
Okay, sure. I'd be happy to post that out. Great. Okay, any questions or, okay, get some sun, enjoy your week. Thank you.
I will send Mackenzie emails too. So if you ever want to just ask her to put something out there.
I just don't have all of the information.
Yeah, yeah. She'll go and find it. I just say, will you do this?
I just have four things that I'm working on. I have some reporting to do before the end of the month. And Whole Farms Planning Class this Friday, which will focus on livestock. And then the people that participated in the program have to develop kind of like their whole farm's essentially business plan. And then they have a chance to present it to their peers. And so that'll be the final session that we do in April. Um, we have a partnership with the Food Coalition next Wednesday night where we're doing kind of our mixer and networking. And that will be Food and Trivia and it'll be at the Year in Donnelly. And it'll have some just general questions about food. It'll have some general questions about local food. Um, and it should be a nice fun mixer. And then the Victory Garden Series is next Saturday. And then I'll be getting ready to gear up to go to the annual conference, which is the second week in April. But I'll be here at the next, uh, Commissioners Meeting and then I'll be taking off to go to that annual conference.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any, um, sense of how many farmers are still farming in Valley County? Kind of like what size, is it more of the smaller acreages now that are participating in these kind of things or?
Uh, yeah, so. If you define small farm USDA, it's, it's like less than, uh, off the top of my head, I, I don't know. But it's like less than two hundred thousand dollars per year or something like that. And so basically.
They do it on income.
Yeah, everybody is kind of in that small farm bracket, whether or not they identify with being a small farmer or not. Um, it's just a, it's a weird term that people I think are, you know, grappling with. Um, because there's also the term hobby farm. So when is it small farm versus hobby farm? But basically everybody's getting into that small farm mode. And I, this was one of the statistics that I heard, um, thrown around at the Ag Day. But it's somewhere like one point seven or something like that as far as, um, the people that are in farming. And there are local agricultural statistics that I do, but in that county situation statement. Um, but on average, you could say two out of a hundred people are a farmer.
Would you grab those data points for next time?
Yeah.
Would be interesting for the APA Board to learn that kind of stuff too. Um, as people are trying to figure out, you know, if they want to put their farm into an APA. I'm just curious as to how many farmers there are. And I think it's got to be five acres or more. Am I right, Cindy? To go in the APA?
Five acres.
Yeah, more, more than five, five. That's what I was curious about is kind of what people are considering. If they're coming to these farming events, do they have five acres or more or are they under five or what are we seeing?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Now, our Human Resources Director. Morning, Mike.
Good morning. Got a lot of recruitment going on right now. We've had a few people, uh, give us their resignations. Um, but anyway, we are, got a lot of jobs open right now. We are getting a lot of applicants for them, which is very good news. Something that we're seeing this year versus last year. We're seeing a very nice uptick in our applicant pool as well as the quality of the applicants. Um, I am right now actively recruiting for an appraiser, uh, court clerk recruit, patrol deputy, detention deputy, nine-one-one dispatcher. Uh, we are looking for a facilities director, uh, always looking for a mechanic. And we are wrapping up our seasonal marine deputy and, uh, weed and past technician recruitments for the season on those. And we have applicants, uh, pretty good applicant pools for almost all of those right now.
I was shocked at the qualifications for the buildings and grounds.
Yeah.
I mean, we are really getting some qualified people.
We are, and we've had a number of other applicants, uh, come in, strong applicants for that one. And I think we've got probably quite a few more. Uh, also, we're getting really good reach on those with the facilities, uh, director position. We've got one applicant from Utah, another one from Arizona. Patrol deputy, they are in the works of bringing a new patrol deputy on from Tampa Bay, Florida. Uh, so we're getting out there on, uh, the word on our jobs and people want to relocate. Um, one of our other applicants for facilities director, uh, living in the Treasure Valley their whole life. Uh, their application actually says, I'm looking to get to a smaller community. And it's like, well, hey, we have one of those, don't we? And, uh, people like it here and they should, so anyway.
We have two-bedroom, two-bath units coming up first of, probably first of June or July.
I would, that is exciting. I do get, uh, requests or at least inquiries quite often about county employee housing. So it would be very nice to be able to offer some there. Um, anyway, we have, uh, filled the administrative position for the road department, found an interim candidate for that, uh, job. Very good, uh, qualified person there. We have a nine-one-one dispatcher starting with us next week. Um, and we have a pile of marine deputies starting with us next week.
That's awesome.
So anyway, that's going to be good.
Not first?
Yeah, I think they'll be out snow machineing for a while on the lake or whatever. But, uh, although with the warm temps we got coming up next week, we might see some melt on that one finally. Uh, we are wrapping up the respectful workplace training, that online training. Uh, most everybody has completed that, um, but they have until the end of the month if they can get that one done.
That's harassment. I'm getting a harassment here.
Remember, the training is not a how-to manual. It's something to avoid doing. And then after that, I do have a cybersecurity training online already queued up, ready to go. I'm going to let the respectful workplace one get done and then I'll probably put that one out there for everybody. Um, but other than that, that's kind of what I got going on right now. If you have any questions for me.
Are we supposed to know what to do with cybersecurity training?
It's good.
That's that man, right?
Right?
Oh, no.
And actually I need to run it through Jeremy first to make sure it's something he wants out there, but I'm sure it is. It's basically don't click on anything that comes in email form. In fact, just don't open your emails, send the email right there, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, up next. Information Technology Director, Mr. Jeremy.
We'll just eliminate technology and we'll solve all of our problems.
Wait till A I gets here. We're, we're going to have so much fun.
Don't want it. Um, other than just working on our, our normal day-to-day stuff, um. The. M two, the company that does our door access, I met with them on Friday. We look at the, um, Ameritile building. Um, they have a lot of big projects going on, so their schedule right now is out till like August. But if they can, uh, since one of the concerns was that front door, so we have to. Try and manage a bunch of physical keys and it'd be easier to, um, for the contractors and stuff. For that, they're going to see if that's something that they can like sort of squeeze in on a, on a week. No promises, no guarantees, but they're gonna, they're gonna give that a shot. And then they're going to give me a quote for the whole project. Um, it's going to be kind of tentative because, you know, the interior's not done yet and we're still trying to decide on some interior stuff. Um, and in addition, unfortunately, because of some of the tariffs that are happening, uh, Motorola, who owns the manufacturer that they use. Has told all of their vendors that basically come April, all of their prices are going to go up. Nobody knows what that looks like or how much it's going to go up, but. So the quote that I get now, and I'll, I'll present it for approval by the board. Uh, but just a caveat that the quote that we get now might not be what it is when the job actually happens. Because of that, and so it just is what it is. And, and other than that, um, kind of focus on that, I'm doing some stuff for the, uh, transfer station. I know they got that big remodel this summer. Um, and in support of that, I've, I've got some, uh, new cameras to replace the old ones that have been there forever and aren't working very well. And also because of the way that they redid the scale house, they're having a hard time, um, talking to the, the drivers. You have to tell them to pull forward or back up or hey, you're good, go or whatever. So I've got an intercom system that I'm getting set up to install so they can just push a button and talk to the, to the drivers. And so that's kind of what I'm working on right now.
Right, perfect. Can't remember, it feels like there was something I was going to ask you today, but I don't remember what it is, so get it off.
I got one that I was going to ask you. And it has to do with Larry and what we found out at the groomers meeting is, and you've probably seen it online already with the Starlink and. Um, was it Verizon or Star, no, Starlink and iPhones. Starlink and iPhones.
It's Starlink and T-Mobile.
Yeah, you have to, you have to, they partnered with T. Well, T-Mobile offers iPhones, but Starlink, uh. Starlink partnered with T-Mobile for that, for the, the ability to use a cell phone off of Starlink satellites.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I started something we can look at, I think it's still in the testing phases. I don't know if they've rolled it out to, I could look.
I just saw, I just saw my, this weekend where it was rolled out there and I was like, wow.
People being able to actually use it. But you have to have a, we have to have a T-Mobile phone and a T-Mobile phone plan in order to, to use those.
It just said iPhone, it didn't say anything about T-Mobile.
So there's satellite messaging now available on iPhones, iPads. But Starlink is specific to T-Mobile. That was a partnership that was exclusive between T-Mobile and Starlink. iPhone is just now offering satellite messaging and you don't have.
So I, I, so, yeah, so that's two separate things. You, you were correct, Commissioner Caldwell.
Sorry if I.
That's okay. That's okay, that's, that's a good clarification. That made me realize that, yes, so Starlink partnered with T-Mobile to allow like self, like a, actual regular cell phone calls and all the stuff that cell phone can do over the Starlink satellite.
True.
So if you're out in the middle of wherever.
Well, I think it's gonna. The iPhone thing. I understood from, you know, just from the guy that was, you know, presented me and Larry and groomer people is that now they can, it's kind of like your Sirius radio. I, I listen to Sirius radio all the way up the mountain, never a dead spot. Now your Verizon goes dead halfway up the mountain. But, um, this could make all this, this whole deal with radios go obsolete.
Possibly, the, if, if we went all in on T, T-Mobile maybe. The thing with the iPhone, the Commissioner Caldwell was talking about was, uh, the newer iPhones have the ability to send text messages via satellite. But it's not Starlink. They're just using the existing Iridium satellite network that's been here for ever and ever.
Right.
Um, and it's only texting, it's not like phone calls or data or anything like that. And I don't know what like that they're charging for. I know like sending data and, um, texts over the Iridium network used to be fairly expensive. Um, so those, those are kind of two separate things and.
I think it's something we need to, I think it's something we need to watch.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Keep an eye on it. I mean, this is really a functional thing.
And AT and, AT&amp;T is trying to do the same thing that T-Mobile is trying to do with Starlink as far as, um, being able to make phone calls via satellite. But, you know, these companies, sometimes they don't want to, like, T-Mobile partnering, partnering with, with Starlink. Starlink's already got their satellites up there. AT&amp;T's not doing that. What they're going to do is they're going to launch their own satellites. So who knows when that's going to happen? So there's a lot of, it's kind of maybe, I haven't looked into Verizon, maybe they're doing the same thing. But, um, some of these carriers are trying to sort of catch up with what Starlink and T-Mobile are doing, but they're kind of trying to do their own thing, so. So there's a lot kind of happening in that space that I've been keeping my eye on.
Be interesting to watch down the road when.
Yeah.
Marches out, but, uh, it could be a really good technology if it really comes, comes about.
And as our departments recognize needs with certain employees, they should be looking at their budgets and working with the I T to see if there is a need out there. Um, I'll go through Jeremy's office if you identify something. I'll go through Jeremy's office if you identify something that would work, but each one of the departments should be looking at what their need is.
Yep. And with the budget cycle coming up, I'll do what I've done every year and um after I have my initial meeting with Clark Miller, I'll sit down with all the department heads like I've done in the past over the, over the spring and talk about some of those things that they see, so.
How did the step, I, I totally missed that training with the department or the building and P&amp;Z on their new software. How did that go? Was that of interest or?
There was some interest. There's a couple of others that we're gonna look at before making a final decision, but.
I talked to both divisions after that since they're essentially under, or they're my divisions. Uh planning and zoning liked it. Um building would like to do a, would like to see a few more.
Yeah.
Moving forward anyway.
And that's kind of the, the feedback I got as well, so.
Alright, anything else? Thank you.
All I got.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Planning and zoning director.
We went slow. We went slow.
Before we go, I, I, in the bills we just paid, we refunded uh funding on a CUP. Is that just, we didn't use that much or why did we refund money on a CUP?
Um I suspect it was an engineering deposit and we didn't consume all of it.
Oh, okay.
Or someone, you know, pulls their application, those types of things, we refund them.
I thought it was, there's no rant, the one with.
Oh, yeah, cuz there was no engineering.
Doing too.
Yeah, so we didn't even have to look at it for engineering. But when, when they submitted it, they did the thousand dollar engineering deposit. We took off probably the two hundred dollar final plat fee and the surveyor fee.
It was like ninety-five dollars.
Yeah. Yep. So we didn't use it. Um, let's see. So there's a new water company in town.
A what?
New water company and Yes.
Like bottled water?
Yes, bottled, big bottled water and we would like to be able to get some. And we used to have it and then that company wouldn't deliver anymore. Um and that researched it. It's just down here on the corner. It's called Sawto Springs.
Oh, I saw it up.
And five bottles of spring water, sixty bucks and the cooler rentals twelve dollars. And we, we'd split between our two departments, you know, she'd pay one month, I'd pay the next month.
Great. I'd like to get one for in here too. Is there any ordering one? Order one for in here too.
Want me to?
Is an agreement?
Put it on her budget?
No, put it on our budget.
We'll get, we'll get, we'll get one ordered for us and, and tell them the board wants one too. I know, I'm trying to talk to Doug, but.
Yeah, we, I would like to have one in here. I think it's important to have.
Tell them.
When people are sitting in here for four or five hours for P&amp;Z meetings and all this stuff, I think it's important to provide water.
Yeah, cuz I took one of your juices the other night cuz I was like desperate.
And you're fine to do that. But the public might also need some.
Great. So, you know, and hopefully it's as good as the, the last because I know my office really liked it. It was a great benefit to them. You know, something as simple as water.
They offered, there was two different things. One was spring water and one was recycled water or whatever it is.
Still.
Still.
Or something.
Is spring recycled?
Spring, so you want spring water. We want that spring water, yeah.
Whatever it is. I don't, I won't buy anything other than spring water.
I know that there's a really good spring up on, where I'm like, that once in a while only, you know, has mouse, mice species.
Oh, great. What?
Don't order that.
I don't know. I think I saw him out there filling up the this token. So um we're busy, you know, with our day-to-day activities, people calling, people planning to do this and that and wanting to know what they can do with their properties and their kids and how to split and how to build and I mean, it's just basically continuous. Um lots of emails, you know, just asking basic questions. People you know, are interested in doing things. It'll be interesting to see how many applications, today's the deadline, we're going to receive for our May meeting because they're stacking up and they're not big subdivisions. There are four lots, two lots, five lots. They're just smaller subdivisions, but that take just as much work as something that would have eighty lots. Um and we might actually for the first time have to push some uh June. We'll see. I'll sit down and do a timeline on them.
Where is the administrative part?
Huh?
What's the administrative part? Um or you can just deal with it.
Um they have to be original parcels, nor do an administrative plat.
Mm-hmm.
And there are very few of those left. And then it can only be up to like four lots, no new public roads or no roads, anything like that.
Did DF get all those then?
Those are
Or lots?
Because they have probably ten thousand acres out there and they had a bunch of original parcels.
Lot line adjustments, not.
Yeah, they did. The, the split of original parcel and the lot line adjustments, which we allow lot line adjustments. Um I think I brought it to you guys last year and told you what they were doing. Um you know, for the record, I know that soon we're gonna have a public hearing um so that you can approve the road names and then accept the deeds because they're going to deed all those roads to Valley County. There, so there will always be access to those public lands.
Now, that's over there on Red Ridge or all the property that she.
Just Clear Creek. Red Ridge is a totally different thing.
What's Clear Creek?
This is just the Clear Creek area.
Okay.
Portions of the Clear Creek area.
Right.
Um yeah, if you take that what was it, two thousand acres or something and he reported seventy-three, I didn't, I didn't know the specific number of lots. I mean, the average is well above twenty acres a parcel. I mean, these are huge parcels. These are twenty to sixty acre parcels each and then they have some that are thousands of acres. So and then anything beyond what they're doing with that, they would have to come back in with a CUP, preliminary plat, PUD type of thing before any other divisions could ever be done.
Right. Okay, cool.
So I heard this morning that it was actually out, still on the market as one piece, so they haven't recorded the deed yet. We'll see what happens. What else are we doing? Um the APA, yeah, we made a flyer and we've distributed it. Um you know, you were talking to Melissa about the flyers and I mean, the size of parcels and, and things like that and what qualifies as a farm. I'm happy to say this APA commission, they are the experts um because they're the, the actual farmers in the county. And they're, we're giving, we sent the flyer out to all of them and they're distributing amongst all their peers to try to, you know, conjure up some participants.
That's awesome.
Pretty exciting. Hannah made a flyer for us, so.
Is there a
Little artist.
You have any idea if they'll be able to actually do something like that? I mean, how far off are they?
Well, we've sent out a couple of applications. Their next meeting is in May. And we'll see if we actually receive those applications. Otherwise, we'll see what we discuss in May. Probably formal approval of the application and the flyer and, you know, ways that we can actually market people doing it.
Else for Senda? Thank you. Oh, I was a, I was in recreation director. Morning.
Good morning. Wild couple of weeks, as far as I can remember. We're still grooming.
That was crazy.
Yeah, we're still grooming. We've got one cat that's got a wine and a turbo. It did a year ago and um we kind of knew about it. The best thing to do is to run it until it gives up the ghost and then we'll put a new turbo on it. Uh we've got the uh Cascade Cat, the tiller has finally gone out on it. That's the one that we're, is going back to Piston Bully the last week of April and they're supposed to be giving us a new one. And they agreed to take all the extra parts back with them, give us credit for parts in the future. Um on that, we're doing pretty good. I do have a meeting with uh uh one of the guys from DF Development to talk about Clear Creek cuz they wanna plow that road to get their people into it. Right now it's closed by your ordinance. And but he thinks he's got a plan on how to do a dual use where some of it's a whole separate road, so we'll see. If they come to us with a solution, all the better. So the PFC meeting was quite interesting. Uh of course, the things that, that I pushed, I wanna know if they're gonna monitor the silt from the, from all the ash and the fires going in Cascade Lake. And they said they hadn't thought about it, but they would look and see if they can. Um and I talked about the big one for me and I think for all of us should be, what are they gonna do about all the burnt timber in the roadless area? And they have no plans right now to do anything with all that, but they said they would come back to us next month and talk a little bit more.
So monitoring ash going into the lake, they say they haven't thought about that. That has been an ongoing conversation.
I know.
So it's not, you know, I, I don't know who's not thinking about it. I raised this during the fires last year.
Yes, absolutely. The, the bear team should have been thinking about it, be honest with you. And that, that's kind of a, we're gonna get to that in just a second. One of the things that frustrates a lot of members of the PFC is, is right now, all they have is they got a plan to do three hundred acres on a CE. And according to them, they have to just do three hundred acres because that's all they're allowed to do on a CE. There was a young lady from um Lake Fork, who's retired forest service person and asked if they looked at the uh uh through the Fiscal Responsibility Act on Emergency Stabilization. And according to her, and she's providing the documentation, they're allowed to use a CE because of that uh emergency stabilization from other agencies. And the BLM has one that's forty-seven hundred acres. He said, why aren't you using that? And she, they basically said, we didn't know about it, we'll look at it, but we don't have enough people to flag trees anyway, so we probably can't do that. She, this lady's great. She goes, I can get a, probably three, four people up there and they can mark the trees for you. So we'll see how, what comes back out of the payhead on that.
What can we do to help with that? Do we need a letter of support for that?
Uh we'll see what happens next month because if they're not even gonna look at it, which would be crazy.
And we could do a letter of support back to Tom Schultz.
Say it again.
We could do a letter of support to Tom Schultz.
That's true.
A request for.
I was gonna say, he's gonna be here next month at the IFRP, I guess what it is.
What is that?
Idaho Forest Products Council, it's a meeting in Boise. And I'm gonna send you, you guys the information on it and it's open, anybody can go to it. We're trying to get as many as possible to go. Anyway, that, that's where we are on the fires. Uh other than the fact that, so the, the bar team, they're funding for the fires for cleanup on the, on the lava fire, they, they're receiving four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Wolf Creek Fire, ten thousand dollars and Lime Point Fire, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now that includes roadside, uh getting the at-risk trees along the road, uh taking care of the campgrounds that burned up. It does not take care of the bridges and some of the other stuff, so they're working on that. A lot of talk about how they're gonna deal with the roadless area and I, I'm not getting any straight answers out of the Boise or the payhead on roadless. Just that they're gonna.
Can you explain to all of us, especially to me, what roadless area means? You know, there's, 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 you know, wilderness area.
Yeah, so.
Why the heck is roadless?
It's, it's a long conversation and we can have that, but basically what it is, is they identified certain areas uh by the state that would be roadless. Now that doesn't mean if there's a road in there, I can't stay in there. It doesn't mean that you can't build a trail in there. You can with roadless rules. So there's, there's five different roadless rules and e- so each area is different. This one up here is a recreational road, this one. But they don't have any plans and go, all those trees that are up there, my comment is the same to them as it has been every, every meeting. As we all know, when Worm Lake burned, it burned three times in a row because they never took the old timber out of it. They left it standing, it dies, it dries and it burns. And that's what's gonna happen up there, so my comment's always the same cuz they don't, don't have the money to do it. What costs more? Cutting some trees down, leaving them stacked on the side of the road for the locals for firewood or going and fighting another fire? And I guarantee you it's fighting another fire. And I wish they would look at, fiscally, I wish they would look at things more like, like we do, but um.
Let's hope the new administration will do that.
Uh amen. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Anyway, I, by the way, it wasn't three hundred acres. They're doing two hundred and fifty acres is all they're gonna do on those fires.
Could you go to the PFC with him? Who went to the PFC?
I was going to ask Callan.
I have a PFC and BFC this year.
I was glad to see you there.
So virtually. There's something we can do. I, I just really feel like right now is the time to write a letter and not wait for them.
Yeah.
So if you provide some bullet points, we can go in and write a letter and.
Yeah, and I, and I did, I did put that uh comment letter for next week's meeting. Yeah, so we'll, we'll do that. And I, I commented on it too. Personally, I commented that I did appreciate the Forest Services weaponizing the ESA. And um
Is it ESA? You use acronym.
Endangered Species Act.
Okay, thank you.
So say, uh say, uh District Ranger might say to you, unless you guys take care of this, I'll use the Wolverine to close that area. That's weaponizing the act. And that did happen. So I wrote it back. I, I sent everything back east. I had Sandra get on it and, and they did the same thing. So uh we'll, we'll see how that comes out. There's three new critters being mentioned as endangered. They're the Monarch Butterfly, the Blade Skipper and Callan's favorite, the Cuckoo Bumblebee. Well, it's, I asked the Forest Service if they've ever heard it and they haven't, but they are, next month they're gonna report it. Because my comment is, so if those three insects get listed, how will they affect our, our, the projects that we have going up there? How will it affect the local economy? Do they affect us at all here? And they're supposed to get back to us next month and give us those answers. Um other than that, we're rolling right along and I will send you the information for the IF, IRFP. I think, I'll send you that information. Any questions?
I appreciate the IFRP, Ben.
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's a good one. It, it's the first time it's been in Boise. It's always been at Cordillane or, or someplace like that. And to have uh have that high of a, to have the secretary show up is pretty amazing. So we get as much attention on our area as possible.
I suspect we will see him quite a bit, so developing relationships are going to be really critical for us to be successful.
I, I agree.
But we also need to use our PIN and start communicating more and more with our congressional's and with the secretary.
I, I know they had a meeting, a meeting with Foulcher about some of this uh last week. And um I think there's another one coming up next week, so.
Let us, keep us up to date in how we can engage.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I got an email yesterday from Mara. I'm gonna give her update really quick on her departments. Our fireworking grants are still open until April fifteenth. They've got thirty applications so far this year and last year they had forty-four. She's been working with a subcommittee with the Valley County Fire Working Group on projects. The General Fire Working Group, they completed the comp plan recommendations, met with the planning and zoning commissioners and they approved all suggestions that were recommended. Some rewording will be done, but overall the commission liked adding and incorporating wildfire info, other aspects into the comp plan. She's been working a lot on the draft of the CWPP for the fireworking group and incorporating elements that need to be included in the document for applying for other grants. Uh CWPP is usually contracted for their counties from a third party. She is doing it herself, which could save the county anywhere from sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Which is a huge deal. And the kickoff meeting for that is April third at the Donley Fire Station. So if anyone is available for that. Uh Legislative Subcommittee, they're working on setting priorities and accomplishments. Uh updating the land use ordinance containing wildfire urban interface protection plans. Uh some of the subdivision regulations in Valley County require in the new developments, that's, she's updating that. Creating a geo database portal for mobile risk assessment. It's used for planning purposes for the all hazard mitigation. And incident management teams, Cara, uh Cara's working on creating that. She'll be, have that ready in May for us. Create a WUI overlay zone for building ordinances and adaptation. Create the driveway permitting regulations. Evaluate the need and placement for dry hydrant throughout the county. Adopting and promoting the current WUI international codes. She's hoping to get a meeting scheduled in April to prioritize some of that. The land subcommittee, there's an annual revision of the CWPP, alignment with the future current completed implementation projects. Fire hazard modeling and priority planning areas. Determine which risk maps that need. Determine which risk maps that need to be included in the CWPP update, evacuation zones. She's working with BSU on those evacuation zones countywide. They're hoping to have that done before June. There's a response subcommittee. There is a pre-scenario fire and collaborators will gather necessary information to practice the decision-making process by controlling a fire's incident scenario. They're gonna have role players and multi-jurisdictional incidents. So basically they're doing a tabletop exercise. That meeting is set for May 6th. If anybody wants to attend that one. And then the education subcommittee. I'm really excited about this, but wildfire preparedness day is set for May 3rd at the Donley Fire Station. Working with all agencies to have booths, games, fire trucks and insurance reps there. There's a community awareness, promote community awareness, action and resilience to enhance self-reliance of the community when it comes to wildfire risk. Have the Firewise ads on Facebook, newspaper and online and collaborate with all of the participating agencies and entities to ensure a unified and consistent message. I think that's a lot of the things we need to work on in Valley County is educating our constituents on what's out there. The All Lands Partnership have not heard quite yet if they've got the $20 million back to implement the Firewise this year. But they have already set the priority planning areas in the county. So once they get that word, then it will move forward.
So that's, it's kind of held in limbo right now.
It's in limbo. However, Idaho Power has given 29 million to back that. So we've got 49 million coming and Idaho Power is, is, I'm sure that they will move forward one way or another, so. And that is her report. She is doing a lot right now.
Yeah, she's, need help. She keeps that up.
She is. All right. Our next agenda item is not until 10:45. So Kirsten, if you-